Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I'll go ahead and call the meetings to order. So, thank you all for being here. See some new faces. So, for those of you that have never been here before, we are happy you're here and joining us this evening. So, we'll go ahead and start the meeting with the invocation, and that's going to be sent by Pastor Larry Winchester from the Greater Evangelist Temple, and it'll be followed by council member Mayor Proton Matt Herman. So, if you can stand if you're willing and able.
Greetings, Madam Mayor, City Council. I bring peace. I bring blessings to us tonight. Father God, we come to you tonight recognizing that you are the Lord God over all things. At the light, we present this meeting and the business of this community, of this great community, to you. We ask for you to give guidance and direction, and the directions we need to go. And Father, where there is wisdom, Father, we pray you to give us wisdom beyond ourselves to do that which is right, not only for our own ambitions and our own desires, but what is the best for our community. We thank you for those who have given their time and their energy before us to dedicate themselves to the direction of this community. We thank you for their attitudes. We thank you for their lives and their examples, and we pray, Father, right now, that you be with us. So, come, Holy Spirit, live over us, guide us, and direct us in all that's being done. And we believe, Lord, that things that are happening here tonight will be for your glory and your honor, and for the best of this community, that Casa Grande will come and be one of the better communities in this entire state of Arizona because of who we are, who we are in you. So, look over us, guide us today, and we'll give you praise, and all this takes place in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Thank you, Matt. Okay. Adriana, if you can accept for the record that all the council members are here?
So noted.
Great, thank you. So, first item are the minutes.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I move we approve the minutes of the regular council meeting September 2nd, 2025, and accept for the record the minutes of the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting of August 7th, 25, and the minutes of the Arts and Culture Commission meeting of August 8th, 2025, as presented.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next item are the claims.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I move that we approve the list of claims for August 27th, 2025 through September the 9th, 2025.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second to accept the claims. Are there any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the meeting agenda approval. Any changes to the meeting agenda?
We have no changes, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Anyone here?
No.
So, if we can approve them.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next, we have a couple presentations here. So, I believe I'll be going down there, right, Adriana? I think that's what she said. Get my glasses. Couple presentations. All right, thank you. Okay, the first one, I wanted to bring up Mr. Ralph Varela. Ralph Varela is with the Latino Familia Initiative. So, we have a proclamation for Hispanic Heritage Month. And so, I'm gonna go ahead and read the proclamation. It says, "Whereas since 1988, the United States has honored the contributions, heritage, and rich culture of the Hispanic and Latino Americans during Hispanic Heritage Month. Annually observe from September 15th to October 15th, a period that includes the independence anniversaries of several Latin American countries. And whereas Casa Grande, Arizona, a vibrant city in Pinellas County with deep Hispanic roots, recognizes and values the diverse cultural traditions, achievements, and legacies of its Hispanic and Latino community. And whereas the Latino Familia Initiative, launched in Casa Grande, embodies the city's commitment to uplifting Latino families through leadership development, community partnerships, and intergenerational engagement that promotes education, civic involvement, and cultural pride. And whereas the city of Casa Grande embraces the opportunity to celebrate and uplift Hispanic heritage, recognizing its vital contributions to our arts, culture, education, commerce, public service, and civic life. And whereas cultural programming such as Celebrar in historic downtown Casa Grande, along with initiatives supported by the LFI and community partners, creates opportunities to highlight and share the diverse stories and traditions of Hispanic and Latino residents. So, now I therefore, Lisa Fitzgibbons, Mayor of the City of Casa Grande, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim September 15th through October 15th as Hispanic Heritage Month in the City of Casa Grande. I call upon all residents, public and private institutions, schools, and community organizations to join in recognizing and honoring the diverse heritage, accomplishments, and vibrant contributions of Hispanic and Latino Americans, and to support the continuing work of initiatives such as the Latino Familia Initiative in strengthening families and building community." So, this is for Ralph Varela.
Good evening, Mayor Lisa Fitzgibbons, Mayor Proton Matt Herman, and City Council and City Staff. Thank you for this Hispanic Heritage Month proclamation. The city of Casa Grande has been a strong supporter of diversity and enhancing the quality of life for all residents. Hispanic Heritage Month honors a rich culture, its contributions to city, state, and this nation. Our contributions are interwoven into all aspects of this beautiful city. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Okay, tonight, in honor of Hispanic Heritage Month, we are recognizing a young woman who will be representing our city with grace, pride, and dedication. Please join me in welcoming Esmeralda Sierra, who has been crowned Miss Casa Grande Latina 2025. And Esmeralda is not only a role model for our community, but she is also an advocate for mental health awareness and community empowerment. Through her platform, she inspires others to overcome challenges and believe in the power of family, culture, and education. It is with great pride that we present and sash Miss Casa Grande Latina 2025, Esmeralda Sierra.
and I am honored to be here tonight and share a little bit about my platform and speaking Spanish for my community. Over the past few months, I have created a binder filled with resources and information to support the families who have faced barriers with language and communication for access for resources in this community. Thanks to my work as a community health counselor with Pinellas Hispanic Council and as a graduate with ASU, getting my masters, I am specializing in multilingual learners, and I have finished firsthand what it truly takes to see the importance of language access for the resources in this community. This project, which I have named Manos Unidas Comunidad con Voz y Acceso, is very deeply into my heart because I believe within our community, as we have the right tools, we can move forward together. And I also want to take a moment and share with you all that on October 5th, I will be proudly representing the city of Casa Grande. And the journey has been more than just about me, but advocating for that mental health, the resources, culture, and education. And since Hispanic Heritage Month is just around the corner as of today, I just wanted to take a special moment and surprise tonight for our mayor, Lisa. Lisa, you have been an inspiration to me socially and professionally as one of the first mayor Latinas and female role models for this city. Your advocacy, your leadership, and your examples of proud Latina women have paved the way for many of us. And in recognition of Hispanic Heritage Month, I would like to present with you a small gift and a token of appreciation for you. Thanks to you all again, and I'll take a moment to share this gift for Lisa.
Oh, wow. I can see. Thank you. And we wish you the best. We are happy to have you represent us, and we wish you the best, and you come back with that crown. We want to see you with that crown. So, thank you, Esmeralda.
You have to wear that at every meeting now, Mayor.
Okay, and finally, but we're not gonna forget this important day, too. We are honoring Officer Brian Walsh, who is retiring on the 26th after 20 years of service in the police department. Before joining the department, Brian spent 24 years in the U.S. Air Force. So, Brian, thank you for your service to our country. Officer Walsh began his police department career on September 8th, 2005. During his career here, Brian had had a variety of special assignments, including ID technician, motor officer, field training officer, departmental phlebotomist, special operations team member, explorer program advisor, detective, honor guard member. And I also served with him on the Faith Alliance for many years, and I appreciate your service also in the church community. So, and, oh, I guess they just put that here. So, and you also serve the members of St. Anthony's Church as an ordained deacon. So, Brian, on behalf of all of us, our fellow council members, and all the staff in the city, and citizens whom you have served over the past 20 years, congratulations on your retirement. We celebrate with you, and all the best to you and your family. So, congratulations.
Yeah, thank you very much. I wanted to come here tonight, one reason in particular is to let you know I appreciate that opportunity to have been able to serve here as a police officer in the city of Casa Grande. It was a real privilege to do so. It's also another occasion for me to say a special thanks, both Chief McQuarrie, who I served under as most recent chief, and also former Chief Huddleston. It was around this time, about 20 years ago, you had interviewed, and we did all the screening and all that sort. So, just a special thanks to both of you. Grateful to God for that opportunity, but also I wanted you all to know every day out there was a real privilege to be able to serve the city of Casa Grande. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I say a word about Brian? So, yes, I was the police chief at the time and made the final decision to hire Brian, and one of the best decisions I made was bringing him on the department. He repeatedly demonstrated that he's not only a good servant to the community, but a good protector. And he was a very good officer, and he's also a very good man. And very good people make the best police officers. And Brian, you fit that mold perfectly. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, we wish you all the best. Can't wait to see your pictures on what you're gonna be doing afterwards, Brian. Okay, so, let's see. So, next is the consent agenda, if there's anything else. No? The consent agenda, all items listed with an asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion and one roll call vote of the council. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or member of the public so requests, in which the event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda. Is there anything that anyone would like to remove?
No.
Nope, staff, anyone, anyone from the public? Okay, so if we can get a motion.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I would move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, if we can get a roll call vote, please, Adriana.
Councilmember Remo?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Bedellin?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, public comments. I do have a couple speaker cards. So, if anyone would like to come up and address the council, if you can limit your comments to three minutes. But I'll go ahead and start with the two cards that I have here. The first one is Kendra Wilson and Victoria Nash. Is it Nash? Yes, Nash. So, ladies, if you can say your name again, and if you can give your address. It looks like you have the school address on here. Are you representing one of the schools?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, you can do that.
Hi, good evening. My name is Kendra Wilson. I'm the Public Information Officer for the Casa Grande Youth Commission. Hello, I'm Victoria Nash, I'm the treasurer for the Casa Grande Youth Commission. We are kickstarting our mentorship program at Cactus Middle School. We aim to inspire and let the youth of Casa Grande live to their full potential, fun activities, and lessons. We also have our semi-annual Day of Shredding coming up on October 25th from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. This is going to be at the First American Credit Union on Panal, so make sure to bring any electronics and old papers. Thank you so much.
Do it again. Do it again. Do you want to do it again?
One more time.
Do it again, so then the people watching, they can hear.
Okay.
That was just practice.
So, good evening. My name is Kendra Wilson. I'm the Public Information Officer with the Casa Grande Youth Commission.
Good evening. I'm Victoria Nash. I'm the treasurer of the Casa Grande Youth Commission. We are kickstarting our mentorship program at Casa Grande, sorry, at Cactus Middle School. We are so excited to mentor students and let them grow to their full potential that we know they can be through fun activities and games.
We also have our semi-annual Day of Shredding, which is going to be held on October 25th from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. This is going to be at the First American Credit Union on Panal, so make sure to bring any electronics and old papers. Thank you.
All right. Good job. Thank you. Thank you, and thank you for Matt. I know they had a retreat this weekend, so thank you for doing that. Thanks for being here, ladies. Okay, the second one is Barbara Sundest. Barbara, you know the drill.
I'm Barbara Sundest, and my address is 1273 East Cordova Avenue, Casa Grande. And I want to start by saying, because every time I've gotten up here before, I talk about the movie, the tent people, or the unhoused people who are living in tents. And there has been a commission, we've been talking, and I honestly feel like there is movement towards finding them a cap ground where they can be, and where they can be safe, and where they can still, you know, live in their tents. And so, I'm really grateful that that is happening. And I mean, I understand, too, that it's a slow process, but it is moving in that direction, and there are places, I understand, that are being looked at. So, I'm grateful for that. So, my next crucial situation is the elderly, especially the elderly women, like I have a card here from a lady who's, she's 60, I think it's 60 or 69 years old, and she has heart problems, but she lost her house, and so now she has no place to go. She gets $980 social security, and that's it. So, where are you supposed to go? So, I mean, and there's, and like I've talked about it before, I know a lot of other people, I know several other, especially elderly women who are living like that and have no place to go, are living on couches and things. So, here, I heard, so maybe, I hope it's not a rumor, that the Cite Motel is going, is on sale for $1 million. I mean, really. I read a review on it today. It's not worth a million dollars. So, here's, I mean, so I think, I know, who's got a million dollars? Well, what's his name? Travis Kelsey has got a million dollars. That's a fake story, by the way, about him giving all that money to his hometown. But, so I'm just thinking, if the whole city of Casa Grande could find people with money, that we could get that place. I mean, I understand it's really a pipe dream kind of thing, but it would be perfect. The people who could live there, I mean, they'd help clean it up. They'd be willing to pay whatever they can pay towards it. It's in a place where they can get services from Seeds of Hope and St. Vincent de Paul. And, I mean, it just would be a place, and maybe jobs, so that eventually they can leave that place and actually get their own apartment. But I just, and I know that it's a really big deal, but, I mean, wouldn't that be great if the entire community could find some wealthy person to donate towards a community home for these people? And that's all I have to say. Thank you for listening again.
Thank you, Barbara. Is there anyone else? I know I have one more card, but it looks like it's for item K2. So, we'll wait on that. But is there anyone else that would like to speak? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public comments, and we're on item J1. As you all can see, it was just a busy couple weeks interviewing for all the commissions that we have openings for. So, these next several items are just approving the appointments, so if we can do those individually. So, the first one is the reappointment of Joseph Smith to the Airport Advisory Board, and also appoint Brittany Schmidt to the Airport Advisory Board. I don't think either of them is Joseph here. I don't think Joseph, and Brittany's not here. So, neither of them are here, but just wanted to thank them for their service on the advisory board.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I move approval of appointing Joseph Smith and Brittany Schmidt to the Airport Advisory Board.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the next one is for the Community Services Advisory Board, the appointment of Melissa Yost. I don't see Melissa here. Again, thank you for Melissa for serving on this advisory board.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I move that we appoint Melissa Yost-Fuentes to the Community Service Advisory Board.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the next was the Historic Preservation Commission, the appointment of David Brett Benedict and Dean Dill to the Preservation Commission. I think, I see Brett Benedict. If you can kind of stand, wave, thank you, Brett, for your service. And I don't think I see Dean in here. So, again, we appreciate you serving on this commission.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I move for appointment of Brett Benedict and, David Brett Benedict, sorry, and Dean Dill to the Historic Preservation Commission.
Second.
Okay, and finally, the appointments for the planning, oh, oh, sorry. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Sorry, I was ahead of myself there. And finally, is the Planning and Zoning Commission, the reappointment of Garrett Aldretti to a second term extending through November 7th, and the appointment of Andrew Clegg. He was filling a position that extends through November 7th, 2026, and then the appointment of Isaac Ibrahim to the term extending November 7. I do see Andrew Clegg here. So, Andrew, if you can stand, we appreciate your time and dedicating your time and service to this commission. You can get a motion.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I move to approve Garrett Aldretti and Andrew Clegg and Isaac Ibrahim, sorry, to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much. So, now we're on to K1, and that is you, Kevin.
Thank you. Staff recommends that the mayor and city council authorize a contract with Sunland Asphalt Construction LLC to perform the annual pavement preservation program, which includes crack sealing, micro sealing, asphalt removal replacement, utility cover adjustments, grading, compacting, restriping of the pavement markings on our city streets that will be treated this year. Staff is requesting authorization to use a City of Glendale Job Order Contract Number C25-0494. This is a contract that we've used several times and has been very beneficial to us as we get very good competitive pricing. That was gained through this procurement. The project will consist of doing a variety of treatments of pavement to extend the pavement life of roadways within the city. In the agenda packet, we did provide maps of all of the areas. It's a lengthy list, so I won't go over those, but they'll be part of the record. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Oh, the contract is $249, $2,497,464, and we did have $2.7 million in the budget for this project. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Comments? Kevin, can you tell me, did you say this is online for people to see where those, I mean, besides the agenda? Is there somewhere else where someone can look where those are?
I don't know if we have it online, but it is part of the agenda that they should be able to get to through the webpage.
So, if anyone has any questions now, will that go into some of our future communications, Larry? You know, yes? Okay. But it's not yet. Okay.
Typically, we'll send out the public notices when those projects are about to start, and our PIO does put those maps as part of those announcements. and our PIO does put those maps as part of those announcements.
Right, okay, but it is on the agenda today, so if anyone wants to know. Okay, thank you. So if we can, if there's no questions, if we can get a resolution number, please.
Resolution number 5817, a resolution of the Council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a proposal from Sunland Asphalt and Construction LLC for the annual pavement preservation program, authorize an expenditure of public funds, and authorize an execution of a contract with, or purchase order to Sunland Asphalt and Construction LLC.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I move for approval of resolution number 5817 as presented.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Okay, Adriana, if we can get a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Romo?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Bedelen?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Helsin?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, item K2. Chief.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, tonight, we come before you asking you to consider approving resolution for the Flock Safety City Initiative Agreement. It's recommended that council approve this resolution to enter into an agreement with Flock for the implementation of the Safe City Initiative. This will use the Flock Safety Platform, we believe it will not only enhance public safety, but increase operational efficiency, and finally provide some cross-departmental technology integrations for the City of Casa Grande. As mayor and council are already aware, we're already involved with Flock, we currently have 22 LPRs within our city limits. I've presented some of these statistics before, they're, they are a little bit old, but I think they get the message across of the effectiveness. We've had 212 stolen vehicles identified, 168 arrests that were related directly to our LPRs, and over 580 times, our detectives has inputted data and information into this Flock camera to help them in investigations. Even prior to getting our own LPRs, we used the Flock system through Maricopa, Tempe, and a town in Texas to apprehend a double homicide suspect, where the homicides took place in our city, and that was a direct result of Flock technology. The Safe City Initiative, as you know, is a 10-year plan, and it is designed to modernize our public safety infrastructure. This initiative will focus on real-time intelligence, officer safety, community security, and again, operational efficiency through the tools such as license plate recognition, live video monitoring, audio detection for fire, for shots fired, drone deployment, and an integrated data platforms for our department. This will all be accomplished by our standing up our real-time information center that we've been talking about. We also feel that although this is a strong tool for the, for the public safety, we feel very strongly that it will greatly assist our Parks and Recreation, our Fire Department, our Emergency Management, and Public Works. In our current city budget for FY26, there was multiple allocations already there to support surveillance and the technology improvements. We had $144,000 that was allocated to the Police Department for our initial expansion of PTZ cameras and LPRs, and then in looking at the CIP approval list, we've discovered that there was $200,000, with $45,000, I believe, of that as a carryover from Parks and Recreation for surveillance cameras, $200,000 allocated to the City Manager's Office for surveillance cameras, and then in the meantime, our state legislature was kind enough to grant us $300,000 towards our real-time information center. We met with Mr. Rains and decided, or didn't decide, we asked if we could take those fundings and get camera systems set up citywide that would allow for integration, allow us to view it when we needed it, and share that information with other city departments. In the meantime, we have also applied on this resolution, it says two grants, but actually, we applied for four grants so far, one of them being the one that you just approved in the consent agenda, and that was for the $56,760 from the Gila River Indian Community. We realize that there is a big financial impact to the City of Casa Grande. This is a 10-year contract amounting for the, or amount for the Safe City Initiative that ultimately will, in the 10-year span, will cost $10,011,962. But it is structured in annual payments. If you remember, when we first came to you, the first year of the initiative was for $145,000 or $146,000. If you, if you look at the resolution in front of you now, you can see that year one is $300,000, year two is $322, year three is $322 also. That was because when the state legislature gave us the money, and some of our grant programming, we did not have a choice but to spend it within this fiscal year, so we got with Flock and asked them to restructure our contract, so that we could use up all the available grant money that we have coming to us, and that's why those numbers are different. This contract is structured as a single 10-year contract, they're annual yearly payments to Flock Safe City. In the contract, Flock has given us the opportunity that if something happens financially with the city, a downturn or anything, there is a non-appropriation clause that's in the, in the contract, that if council decides down the road that they do not have the money to support this program, or if we as a police department, we as a city show that this program is not meeting our expectations, all we have to do, we can, we can bow out with a non-appropriation clause, which we think is a safety net for us, because quite frankly, with the carryover of the CIP money from FY26, the other grants that we're expecting to get some money out of, and the money that's already available, basically, year one through three is already paid for, in that respect, which would give us plenty of time as a city to budget money for the out years. We do think that this proposal will reduce expenses from duplicate or outdated systems, so that we can all get integrated on the same one. Strong believer that it will improve efficiency, leading to better allocation of our staff and our resources. By the time that we, and I use the term run out of money, but by the time that the money that we currently have available for this project, we expect to have a documented return on investment that through operational savings and crime reduction outcomes, that will show the benefit of this system. The way this is structured allows the city, and I've already mentioned this a little bit, of Casa Grande to begin the Safe City Initiative immediately. We get everything in the 10 years right up front, and it'll give us time to plan for sustainable funding in the future years. There are ongoing costs associated with this, that is not in the Flock contract, that doesn't have anything to do with the Flock equipment, and there will be costs that we'll have to deal with moving forward. That's one of the reasons that we applied for the Gila River Indian Community Grant, is to do the startup of our Real-Time Information Center room, so that we're not taking from city budget, we're planning on using that money, now that it's approved, to use it, to build up our room. What we plan on doing originally is staffing this with a current sworn officer, who has shown a lot of enthusiasm to get on the ground floor of this, and Chris Mendez would be the one that's standing this up for us. And what we plan on doing is, like we have done on anything that we do with technology, we gather the information, we prove its worth, and bring it for council to give you a rundown on, on the value of it. And at that point, we look to either adjust our current staff deployment that we already have, or begin a process for new personnel positions. Currently, our department has two part-time CSO positions that we cannot fill, nobody wants to be a part-time CSO. We also have a crime analyst position that is frozen, but the two, in the budget currently, we show spots for two part-time CSOs. If we prove the value of this, there'll probably, not probably, there will be a time we're going to circle back around and ask those two positions to be combined to a full-time position. The Real-Time Information Center is set up to be most effective, with two people in there operating at one time. One person operates the drones, while the other person relays current information to the field units and dispatch. We're going to start off with one, we're going to use Chris, it does not take away from our patrol numbers, it does not take away from our detective numbers, he's in a specialty unit. We're going to use some current people on their downtime, civilians retired, and we're also going to use some of our reserve officers who have shown an interest in, in helping us run that room and making it successful. There's a list of future costs and recurring hardware, I won't go through all that, but again, we plan on taking that money from the Gila River Indian Community, and putting it towards all that, and setting up our Real-Time Information Center with grant money. So, I know that there's a lot of questions, I know there's been a lot of comments from community members, I hope they're people that actually live in Casa Grande, but what I'd like to do is touch on a couple of things that I feel like is not in that resolution, and try to answer some questions beforehand, before we turn it over to y'all, if that's alright. One of the questions that we were asked was, why now? Why are we doing this now? Why are we doing this out of a budget cycle? Well, the reasoning for that is, Safe City's initiative is new, and we were already in the process of contract talks with Flock for our CIP that was approved by council for $144,000, it would have gave us 10 cameras and 17 PTZs, I believe, 17 more. And we had the privilege of meeting, I believe he was the second-in-command at Flock, and he said, boy, this Safe City idea we're coming out with would be good for y'all. And we asked him, why, why now? Why are you telling us this now? We're already in the budget process. Well, it's brand new. So when we saw that there was money appropriated in the budget for other cameras, a total of $544,000, and we were approached by the legislature about money they would give us, we thought this would be the perfect opportunity for us to jump into this, give us an opportunity to try out all the technology that Flock has available, and then from that point on, what didn't work for us, we'd go back to the table with Flock. That's why it's now, that's why it's after the budget process. Councilmember Romo, I don't feel like we answered your question, in fact, I know we didn't answer your question, on crime reduction, and when Hamza was here last time, he was going to get you some information. Well, that's not Hamza's fault, that was our fault, he did get us some information on that. What we found out by talking to other departments that have this system, or have these, these systems, is that there is a reduction in crime, but what they choose not to do is say it solely based on Flock. Because there's patrol officers, there's community effort, there's all kinds of stuff, so they don't keep track of that. Our plan is, and we've talked about this, is that when we set this up, we're going to be able to come and give you a very educated guess, or number, of how many arrests are directly associated with our PTZ cameras, with our, with our Flock equipment, our gunshot detection, and our drones. I will tell you, Councilmember Romo, what they, what they do have is a lot of success stories across the country. We don't even have to ask anybody about success stories in our Flock system. Our LPRs have already more than paid for themselves, in my mind. From catching car thieves that we wouldn't have had before, from catching the homicide suspect out of Texas that came into Casa Grande we wouldn't have known about if it wasn't for Flock. We caught a double homicide suspect of our own in, in Texas that was due to Flock. I know, it just so happens that Tulsa, where I was from in another life, ever since they've put up their Real-Time Information Center in a city of over 400 and some thousand, they have had a 100% conviction rate, solvability rate on their homicides. So, there is those kind of success stories out there, there's just, and we've called around, and I know Hamza has, there's just not anybody keeping track of things like we want to keep track of things. Even when we went to Atlanta and talked to them down there at their premier real-time, they don't even do it. We plan on trying to do that, so we can come to council and actually give you numbers, instead of a couple of success stories. So, for that, I know you were waiting on that, I'm sorry.
I was, thank you, thank you for answering that.
So, performance indicators, and council knows very well that when we do new technology, we usually pay for it out of REICO, and we get a good year out of it, and then we come to you with our numbers, and try to get the city to pay for it. So, we're going into this with some performance measures for us. We really think that it will reduce our investigative time, it'll definitely increase our situational awareness for our officers that are going on calls, especially nowadays, when you have officers showing up on calls and getting ambushed, and we think it's going to really help us and improve our clearance rate. Some of the indicators of that, obviously, will keep track of our felony arrests, our stolen vehicles recovered, our drone deployment response times, our drone deployment handling of some calls. Mayor, you asked during the study session, does that mean that we won't be going to people's houses? No. What that's going to do is, it's going to get a drone on site, a drone's going to give our people information. If there actually is nothing going on, Brian and I were talking today, a year or so ago, we were inundated with calls on side-by-sides, driving behind neighborhoods, officers would get there, and nobody would be there, we'd send two officers. Well, now if that person still wants to see us, we'll go see them, anybody can see us if they ask. But we won't be sending two officers, so we still will be actually responding to calls for service. We're just trying to make ourselves more efficient, more effective, when it comes to that. Obviously, the use of video in court proceedings, we think that's going to take a big step up. I've already mentioned some of the additional expenses that are associated with this. The good thing, to me, that's a selling point in this, I look back 10 years, and I think of what technology was 10 years ago. And then I think about what it is today, in 10 short years, and I'm amazed. With this contract with Flock, we are guaranteed by contract to get up-to-date software for the next decade. We are guaranteed to get up-to-date hardware for the next decade, for the price that we're buying into it today. And in that realm, we won't have to be chasing technology, we'll be ahead of technology, we'll be ahead of other departments. And people say, why Casa Grande? Well, I'll tell you why. Because we really and truly, I think, as a department, want to be the best department there is, and we don't want to chase other departments. I think everybody that wears this uniform in, in our city wants people to look at us and say, man, how does Casa Grande do that, and we can't do it, or why is Casa Grande so good? And I think this goes a long way in putting us ahead of the curve, so we're not chasing technology, we're ahead of it, and we're with it all along, at least for the next decade. Again, I already mentioned the fact that we do think this is a city project, even though I'm not going to try to shade it, it is a, it is a great tool for the police department, but I think, citywide, I think there's a benefit to this apartment, or to this proposal, for several other departments. I think that, I can think of a couple of things, and with Danny's crew in the parks, that had we had these cameras up, had we had these cameras there at the time, they wouldn't, they would have been solved, there wouldn't have been open cases. I know people are worried about Big Brother, to some degree, which I, I'm not making light of somebody else's concern, but when people call with these concerns, or email you with these concerns, I hope they're doing it on a rotary phone, or by snail mail, because if they're doing it on their phone, that phone is capturing a thousand times more information than Flock will. Flock camera will, the Flock, they dump everything every 30 days unless it's evidence. There is a audit trail going into that, our officers can't look anything up. can't look anything up. Our officers can't put anything in it or anything unless they put a reason in there, and that audit trail is kept forever. So when people go into, you know, a pick-a-store and they're on camera, nobody knows who's looking at that. Nobody knows what anybody's doing with that. We'll have an audit trail for that. So, and again, I think I told you at the study session, we're not looking to see if Mr. Smith is hitting Dairy Queen eight times a week, but we really do care if somebody is going out to one of our parks and robbing somebody or making life miserable for somebody in our parks. That's the people we'll be looking at. And again, if we do look at them, it's documented. Who looked at them, what they were looking for, when they looked for it, et cetera. So I went on and on. So.
Thank you.
We'll answer any questions.
Okay. Questions, comments?
There are two points about the project that I particularly like. One is the aspect of including different city departments in it. We've all seen over the years, especially IT, software and hardware on different departments that ended up, wasn't compatible, and couldn't speak to each other. And eventually, it costs us several times over to try to make that work, either with some kind of patch or replacing everything. And I appreciate that you're looking at that. I believe that's a big issue, and I think you're solving it right up front. The other thing is that, my opinion, too often, we as a council have to look at things that are to catch up. We've fallen behind in a certain area, and now we're almost desperate that we have to spend the money. We're scratching for the money. We're in that mode. Perfect example is probably Station 3. We let that go way too long. We fell way behind, and we paid for it. We're now slightly ahead of the curve, but we're where we should have been, I don't know, maybe 10 years ago. And I think this is a good, if not excellent, opportunity for public safety to take a leap forward, to be proactive, to look at the field of equipment and computer ability, to look at that. We know it's coming. All of this stuff is going to be at the forefront sooner than later. And it's a good opportunity for us to show the community that we care, we want it to be a safer city, and we've seen an opportunity here to jump forward in that area. The money is, as far as I can tell, accounted for upfront for the early years. And with the option that you said, if we hit a struggling year, or we decide the program is just not working, we can back out of it. And I think that's a great guarantee. That's a good option that, for me, seals the deal. So I'm all in favor of it.
Thank you, Bob. Matt?
Not to rehash what Bob said, but thanks, Bob. But the thing that made it a lot easier for me is, yes, it came in the middle of the budget cycle, but yet we've managed to find the money that we already had in the budget in different places to start these first three years. And after three years, we'll know if it's truly worth having. And they give us that opportunity after three years or after one year, even if it's not working for us, we can do it. But to allow us to ramp up and plan that forward budget in years four through 10 is really handy, is a really good way to operate our budget cycle. And then I did have concerns about the Big Brother aspect of it. And, you know, like I said, I went to the airport the other day, and they take your picture, and they say, "You don't have to get your picture taken." I'm like, "Well, you have my picture on my passport, on my driver's license, on all these cameras here anyway." I mean, like you said, it's, you know, and the fact of this program knows the responsibility of it. It holds information for 30 days unless we have to save it for a court case or something that gets stored somewhere else. But every time the system's accessed, I checked into this with the chief and everybody, you have to log in, and every access is checked. So somebody can't just be looking in there to see where someone, if someone is going to Dairy Queen eight times, or if, you know, someone's driving by a certain house, you know, just for fun. It's logged every single time, and then we have someone responsible that's going to do, you know, going to be accountable for it. And then with the grants from the Gila River, the state legislature grants, it really helps us get going. So I think it's really going to augment our police system. And like what Councilman Huddleston said, I mean, why, and you said, why doesn't Casa Grande get to be first on something? This is our opportunity to be on the cutting edge instead of, "Well, Phoenix has it, Maricopa has it, and you guys are still using radios and cell phones," you know? This is our chance to show and learn. And, you know, and it seems like a good program where we constantly get updated and everything. So thanks for bringing it up.
All my questions have been answered. Thank you very much for bringing this in front of us. And Bob, Matt, you guys, excellent, perfect. That's everything.
No, and thank you. And of course, we did have a study session. For those of you that this is the first time you're hearing, we had a study session in June. So thank you, Chief. And thank you for answering those questions, because I think those are the questions that I had. But I appreciate it. But again, you know, we, I get your point. You know, we, you know, why can't we be the first? But I get a little nervous sometimes being the test market, you know? And so I think we just have to make sure that we are answering those questions that people have. You know, we wanted, this is a big investment, you know? And I understand the first few years, it's a little lower, but I, you know, I was happy to see, you know, how you broke that out in the RCA, where you put what was already in the CIP for the other departments, and that was $844,000 that we were going to put into these types of programs. So, you know, those first three years are pretty much covered, you know, based on what we were going to do anyway. So I, to me, I was just a little nervous with the year four at $870,000, and then 1.3 million on those following years. But I, for me, it's safe, you know, that we can get out of it, you know, if we want. But I just want to make sure that our legal department, you know, Brett and his team have looked at that contract, and there's nothing hidden in there, you know, that we are, you know, safe to say that we can get out of it, you know, pretty easily? Is that correct?
Yeah, we have looked at it, and we did work with Flock, and they understand that it's important for councils and kind of required under Arizona law, when you're looking at a long-term thing, to have the ability to get out if you decide not, this council or a future council decides not to appropriate those funds. And that could be in year two. It could be in year 10. And in order to ensure that it's not just a termination, we've also worked with them to make sure that you also have the ability not just to terminate it, but to scale it back as well. So, but those clauses are in the agreement to make sure that this council or a future council can get out of the contract if it needs to by not appropriating the money for future years.
Okay. So when you talk about scaling it back, so say we have 70 cameras, and we want to move them to different locations, and what, where does that come in? Who does it? Is there an additional cost, or how does that work?
We have two of our.
Sure. And yeah, if you want to come up, because I might have a couple other questions.
I should have brought that up earlier, because better question or better answer on them.
Absolutely. Don't worry. So anytime during the contract, Flock manages and maintains everything. So if a camera goes down, you know, three years in or four years in, that's not something that you're going to have to worry about. We're going to get a notification. We're going to come out and replace the camera for you. If there is a damage, or if we do need to move a camera to a different location, there is a shared cost. I want to say it's sub $1,000, and we fly out a technician out here, and we move the cameras, and we position them in a place that the police department or Public Works or joint efforts decide that the camera would be more valuable.
So there is a cost if it's damaged, or like, so say these haboobs that come in through town, if that takes a camera down, does that?
It's got to be like gross negligence, Mayor, or it's got to be just deliberate damage. So if these cameras just fall off the pole, then no, we're going to own it there.
Okay. Another question, maybe you can answer. So say after four years, we decide this is, you know, as we collect data, do we, you take all the cameras? There's nothing that we keep? We don't, I mean, it's all your equipment?
Correct. Yes.
Okay. And then, what was it? Oh, did you have a question?
Yeah, I do have another question. On placement of the cameras, who's in charge of identifying the ideal positions for the cameras as they come in? Is our department in charge of that, or are you guys identifying it through some algorithm?
I can't tell you, Councilmember Dugan, how many meetings that we had about this, right? And as a matter of fact, we also took the raw data from the calls for service for the city of Casa Grande, and we broke them down to figure out where the hot spots are and where we're going to be able to get the most effect out of these camera locations. Chief Ramirez, myself, as well as my team, which is made up of former law enforcement, all spent a lot of time to make sure that these are placed strategically and to help you reduce crime and identify the problem areas that the city of Casa Grande.
Perfect. So it's working in conjunction.
Absolutely.
And Chief, you mentioned, you know, we're guaranteed to get up-to-date software and hardware. How do you determine that? You know, to make sure that we're not, "Oh, yeah, three years from now, we'll get to Casa Grande." They've had this for a couple of years. But is there like an annual, you know, meeting where you collect, go over data and statistics, and, you know, what the newest, you know, trend is or whatever technology? How do you go about as a company to make sure that we are getting the most, you know, recent and updated equipment?
Absolutely. So if it's hardware that we're going to continue to maintain, Mayor, if at any point that that's just hardware that we're not supporting any longer, we're going to come back, replace these cameras with our latest hardware, right? Or any of these devices with our latest hardware. In terms of software, actually, Chief has already seen this. There is a new software product that we actually just recently launched that was not originally part of this packet, and my CEO had basically said that this is going to be included for you because it's software that we've launched. So all software that we launch over the next 10 years is going to be included for the city of Casa Grande at no additional cost. When it comes to hardware, there are two refreshes built in, right? So if there's a product that we just simply don't carry anymore, like that we never carried previously, but we are going to carry in the future, there is two swaps that are built in over the next 10 years to where we can take down a certain number of cameras or drones or whatever the case may be, for whatever the latest thing is that we're going to carry, right? I don't know what that is, but that's built in to help you future-proof this operation and this particular project.
Okay. Okay. And then I think the only other question I had for, probably for you, Chief, when you talk about the real-time information centers, and you were talking about, you know, maybe having part-time employees, I'm trying to understand that real-time operations center. So is it a part-time, do you need 24-hour, you know, operations? Does something like alert you when there's something that comes up? If you can just kind of explain what that operations center is?
Sure, Mayor. So as far as 24/7, it won't be 24/7 on the onset, and many of them aren't. I'll take, for example, City of Chandler is not 24/7. They're about 40 hours a week. And that's our plan, is to do that. Find the times when crime is most prevalent and have it up and running during that time. As far as how do we know when things happen? So we have Flock OS. It's kind of the heart of the system. Whenever a call comes out, it's mapped on Flock OS, and we can see where our cameras are, and we can start clicking on those cameras and pushing out real-time information, really before an officer even gets on scene. So that's where the efficiency and the preparedness of the officer comes into play.
Okay. Okay. Good. Any other questions? No, thank you. Oh, you have another one?
It just came up. So do you have the ability to like push the cameras to the screens in the cars for the responding officers?
So all the officers have access to Flock OS. So it's limited by permissions. So the officers won't have the ability to move the cameras. That'll be done in the real-time crime center. There are modes on the cameras, like guardian mode. So take, for example, Carmacknap Park. When the park is closed, we can put the cameras on guardian mode, and they'll start swiveling at specific time increments. If they do see a person or a car, it'll key in on that vehicle and stay with it, or a person. And officers have access to that.
They will get notified on things like that after hours. Like, we can grant Danny's park rangers that kind of access to where if something's going on after hours, they also get an alert when we get an alert.
Yeah. And public safety is always at the top of our citizens' concerns and their concerns as well. So it just goes along with that, obviously.
No, absolutely. And I think, you know, the whole thing is crime reduction is the outcome, you know? So that's the most important. So, okay. I do know that there's one person that would like to speak on this, Marco Cruz. Marco, hi. If you can come up and give us your address, please.
Good evening, Mayor Fitzgibbons, and councilmembers and members of the community. My name is Marco Cruz, and I live at 1362 East Tuscany Street here in Casa Grande. Tonight, you're being asked to approve a 10-year, $10 million contract with Flock Safety for the Safe City Initiative. I'm here to urge you to vote no on that contract. This plan is not just about cameras. It's about building an entire surveillance dragnet throughout the city of Casa Grande. That includes 78 new license plate readers, which we currently already have 22. That includes 100 live video cameras in parks and neighborhoods. That includes mobile surveillance trailers and drones, and even the ability to plug school and private security cameras into the system. All of this runs through Flock's central platform, giving a private data broker the power to collect and share massive amounts of personally identifiable information on our city's residents in real time. We're told that these are license plate readers, but they're not. They're AI surveillance cameras that can identify a vehicle's make, color, and unique features such as bumper stickers or dents, even without a license plate. These systems are also error-prone and open to abuse. For example, in Colorado, a family was pulled from their vehicle at gunpoint after a license plate reader error triggered a false hit for a stolen vehicle, and the city later had to pay a $1.9 million settlement. In Kansas, police officers misuse Flock more than 200 times to stalk their ex-partners. Flock automatically deletes data regarding inquiries and photographs and videos taken after 30 days unless police save it. If you're wrongly accused or harassed, all the proof that could clear your name or get you on the right side of the law can be deleted before it even gets to court. And let's be very clear, Flock Safety does not prevent crime. According to D-Flock, which tracks deployments of these cameras, there were about 20 Flock cameras last week around Utah Valley University campus during the Charlie Kirk shooting last week. And there were another 17 Flock cameras along the shooter's 250-mile drive home. Yet the attack still happened. The cameras didn't stop it, and they didn't catch him. The suspect turned himself in 33 hours later. Flock Safety didn't prevent this crime, and it didn't deliver justice either. And then there's the cost. By year five, Casa Grande taxpayers will pay over $1.3 million annually for the system. And if you look at the pricing scheme, it goes up over time. And let's not forget, we're not even buying the system as a city. We're renting it. The hardware does not belong to us. The data does not belong to us. It's stored on Flock servers, and by default, it disappears after 30 days unless they decide otherwise. We're paying the bill, and we don't control the system. In Austin, Texas, an audit found that Flock Safety's program scanned 75 million license plates in about a year, and that produced about 165 arrests. That's over $7,800 per arrest. Austin has since ended its Flock contract after public pushback and questions about effectiveness. Similar undertakings are also going on right now in Sedona and Flagstaff. Ask yourselves, do we want to spend millions of dollars building a system that could track families going to church, kids at parks and schools?
Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you.
Are you finished?
I have a couple more sentences.
Just a couple sentences, fine.
Okay. Ask yourselves, do we want to spend millions building a system that can track families going to church, kids at parks and schools, or citizens gathering at community events? I think true safety comes from trust, accountability, and investing in people and our officers in street lighting, not from turning the city into a surveillance state. Please vote no, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Marco. Is there anyone else? Any other questions, comments? Can you just address a couple that can't, is that okay? We have this discussion right now, right? Okay. You know, when he talks about a private data broker, can you address that?
Yeah. I believe Attorney Wallace would be able to testify into the contract that we would have with the city of Casa Grande, is that Flock does not, in fact, we don't own the data. I can't access the data. Nobody at Flock can access the data. The data belongs to the police department, and you choose who to data share with.
Okay. And then the whole thing with misuse, Brett, when you look through the contract and what's included, and, you know, misuse of, I guess that was data he was talking about, the misuse of data.
Well, I think, Mayor Fitzgibbons, I think misuse is always a concern, right? And it's up to the department to be responsible for it, right? And you have to trust what your department can do. I think the instance that he talked about, for example, in Kansas, was a, I think it was either a police chief or a police captain who was stalking an ex-wife, right? The reason he was able to be caught is because there is a log that shows who was accessing it and what he was accessing it for. So just like anything else, you have to trust the people in your department. You can't stop people from misusing anything, right? You know, in terms of the things they have today, you just trust that they're not going to do that. The failsafe there, if you have one, is that you have that audit trail, and so the police department can put in procedures to take a look at that and see if someone's running 3,000, 4,000 times of a single car, you know, they can identify that and deal with it appropriately within the department.
Right. Okay. And I think those audit trails are going to be important. And I think just the reviews... And I think just the reviews, I think, you know, what I would like to see is on a yearly basis, you know, is the effectiveness? Is it working? You know, I mean, and what is the data, what are the statistics and things like that? So I'm really hoping that we can make sure on an ongoing basis you can continue to share that. So, and his concerns are concerns that, you know, we're all getting that. You know, I'm getting people that have asked the same questions. So we just want to make sure that we can answer those questions. I like the idea that we can back out, you know, after any time. So if we're in one, two, three years, and if we need to, we can back out. So hopefully that makes you all work harder and do better too.
Absolutely.
But I think we should do our due diligence on some of these other cities and find out what those issues were. And so we can prevent those from happening here.
Do you have a question? The cameras that we currently have, do we own those or are we leasing those as well?
Same, leasing.
We're leasing, okay.
Okay. Any questions? Any more comments? Okay. Let me get back to my paperwork here. So where are we? So I'll go ahead and get a resolution number, please. Adriana?
Resolution number 5818. A resolution of the Council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting the sole source provider offer from Flock Group, Inc. for the implementation of the Safe City Initiative, authorizing expenditure of public funds and authorizing the execution of a contract.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I would move for approval of resolution number 5818 as presented.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, Adriana, if we can get a roll call vote.
Councilmember Romo?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Beedell?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Hiddleston?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Fitzgibbons?
You know, I'm going to vote yes, but I really hope that we can follow up on some of the questions. And I would really like to see these other cities, and while we go into the implementation period, just get some ideas of what he's referring to and so we have a heads up on what's happening there. So, but I'll vote yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Let's see. We are on item K3.
Madam Mayor, if I can, as we start item K3, Mr. Aldus will be presenting on the contract, the agreement with Arizona Water Company. I do want the council to know that we had originally intended to ask council to not only consider the agreement with Arizona Water for shut-offs and the sharing of data, but also we were intending to, in fact, start the fee and rate schedule process that's required by statute for the two elements that we were going to be, additional charges that were going to be part of this program. Unfortunately, the agenda did not get framed properly. And so Rob will be presenting on the agreement. We'll probably touch very lightly on the notice, but know that if the council is supportive of the agreement, at the end of this, we ultimately will be bringing back the notice, the 60-day notice to start the rate process at this October 6th meeting.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As Larry mentioned, today before you, for consideration is the agreement between the
city and Arizona Water for data sharing and water disconnection. And this is a topic that we discussed in a study session back in May. And so today we'll be going over a review of the issues at hand, what the agreement itself actually entails, touch briefly on the fee notice that Larry mentioned just now, then also talk about next steps and a projected timeline for that going forward. So regarding the review of the issue at hand, the city of Casa Grande is in a unique position where the city is the wastewater provider but not the water provider, where that service is provided by the Arizona Water Company, where many cities are both the water and wastewater providers both. And so for those other cities that are both the water and wastewater providers or for APS or Arizona Water or these other kind of utility companies, if a entity is not, or a customer is not paying for a service, then that service is disconnected or turned off essentially because of the idea of if you're not paying for a service, then you don't receive it. However, for the city of Casa Grande, because the sewer system is largely gravity-fed, it's difficult for the city to have teeth, so to speak, to be able to go after people that aren't paying their bills. And that has resulted in many customers ultimately not paying the sewer bills that they ought to pay. And that has left the city to be in a position where, as of right now, there's approximately $2.2 million that the city should have collected in sewer bills but has not collected. Now, that number does not include write-offs that have previously been written off by the Finance Department. So that's what's currently on the books as of this moment, and so that number could in fact be higher. And so a concern of staff is that if some customers are electing not to pay the sewer bills that they should, the costs for the wastewater programs are still there. The infrastructure improvements still need to be made, staff still need to be paid, and the equipment and the materials also need to be procured. And so in essence, if some customers aren't paying, then the customers who do pay then have to cover that extra cost and have essentially rates increased in order to cover those costs. And that's what staff wants to avoid, is to ensure that customers are only being charged the rate that they need to be charged. And so this is where this agreement comes in, and staff feels this is a potential solution to this issue. The first piece is the data sharing portion of the agreement, where Arizona Water will share nine different data points with the city. And this is simple account information, like account number, name, address, water usage, as far as quantity goes. Then that data will be used to confirm utility billing for commercial accounts and also to help ensure that the second piece of this agreement is effective. And to clarify, no sensitive information such as credit card information or social security numbers or anything like that will be shared between Arizona Water and the city. So it's all just basic information. And to give it a little context, in 2018, the Finance Department entered an agreement with Arizona Water to receive 19 different data points monthly. And so in essence, this new agreement would replace that old agreement. And so the number of data points shared would essentially drop from 19 down to nine and decrease that amount. Now for the water disconnection piece, this agreement would essentially give the city the teeth, so to speak, necessary in order to ensure that customers that are not paying their bills do pay their bills. So then that way, the infrastructure and other costs can actually be covered. And it applies to all shared customers, so a customer of Arizona Water Company and the city, and they have to be at least 90 days or more past due. That's kind of the threshold that's been established in the agreement. The city also has to offer a payment plan that the customers can choose to enter into it in order to spread out the cost if they owe a high balance. And also requires the city to give notice in advance or a warning in essence, both posted physically at the address and also mailed to the customers. And then if all of that is in place, then Arizona Water Company, on behalf of the city, will disconnect water service until the payment is made or payment plan is entered into. While this agreement may not solve every issue or every unique circumstance that might occur as far as the utility billing and the city goes, staff's confident that this will be an effective tool to be able to help start collecting that revenue that should have been collected in the past and to ensure going forward that the revenue is collected as well. Now, there are fees that will be charged from Arizona Water to the city as a part of this agreement. I want to touch on each of those briefly. There's a one-time establishment charge that is essentially just having Arizona Water Company integrate this agreement into their processes. A thousand dollars is something that the city's planning on covering should this agreement be approved. The disconnection fee and after-hours reconnection fee are both fees that are initiated if a customer has to have the water disconnected and reconnected if it's after hours. And the plan for those two fees is to have them added to the consolidated fee schedule and then passed directly from the, essentially the city to the consumer or the customer. And because they're essentially initiating that fee. And so that's something that can be taken care of in the fee schedule. Now for the annual fee, the prorated monthly loss revenue fee and the meter damage fee, those are all fees after discussion that staff recommends be included within the general sewer rates because there's a lot of variability to it. It's not as clean as a, oh, this customer's water service had to be disconnected. And so it's a clear fee that'll be passed along like a late charge. There's a lot more variation to it. And so it made more sense to add to the general sewer rates. And now there's actually a requirement of statute to have any adjustment to sewer rates have to go through a sewer or a rate study. And there's actually a rate study just beginning within the wastewater division right now. So the timing's perfect on that. And so the plan is to incorporate these three specific fees into that rate study as well. Now for the 60-day notice, as Larry mentioned, this is something that's required by statute to have a 60-day notice given prior to the public hearing where the two additions to the rate study or the, sorry, the fee schedule will be considered. And so in an upcoming meeting, staff will present that recommendation to council for consideration. As far as next steps from here goes, the fee schedule updates will be worked on by staff. And then once, if this agreement is approved by the council, Arizona Water Company will take this agreement once it's signed to the Corporation Commission for approval because Corporation Commission approval is required for this agreement to be effective. And the timeline for that's a little unsure. We've heard it's anywhere between three and six months that that process can take. And once there's approval from the Corporation Commission, the plan is to begin a public outreach campaign with the residents, with the goal really being to ensure that every resident is aware of the agreement, is aware of everything that it entails. So then hopefully, any residents with a delinquent sewer account can be able to take the initiative and come in, address it, enter a payment plan long before any shut-offs would be required. I mean, the goal would be to not have to shut off anybody, but this agreement will give us the opportunity to provide any disconnections needed in order to ensure that the revenue is collected that needs to be. And then as part of that, post Arizona Corporation Commission approval, a go-live date will be established when the city will begin sending Arizona Water Company the addresses to be disconnected should that be needed. That marks the end of the presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Rob. Any questions? Comments?
I didn't quite understand the 50 cent per shared customer. Is that going to be added to everyone's bill?
So, yes, Councilmember Herman, that's essentially a 50 cent per shared customer fee. And so that's an annual amount. And so if you break that down by month, it's about 4 cents. So that is one of those that will be incorporated into the fee schedule.
50 cents per year?
Per year.
Okay.
Correct.
Sorry, I missed that.
Yeah.
Part right there.
Any other questions? Comments? Okay. So Adriana, if we can get a resolution number?
Resolution number 5820. A resolution of the Council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, authorizing an agreement with Arizona Water Company and authorizing the execution of a contract.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I move that we approve resolution number 5820 as presented.
Second?
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, if we can get a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Romo?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Beedell?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Hiddleston?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, item L1. Dan? Oh, Mary.
No, Mary.
Sorry, Mary.
Staff recommends approval of the Program Year 2024 Community Development Block Grant Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report. We call it the CAPER. The CAPER outlines the accomplishments and activities conducted in Program Year 2024, which is our fiscal year 2025. The city of Casa Grande prepared the 2024 CAPER report as required by federal regulations. The report details project accomplishments as well as expenditures throughout the period July 1st through June 30th, 2025, for the Community Development Block Grant Program. The purpose of the report is to measure and to measure the extent of jurisdictions as priority needs, goals, and strategies as outlined in the 2020 through 2025 consolidated plan. So last year, last fiscal year, we were allocated $434,580 to fund our CDBG programs. So with that funding, our committee and council approved the Opportunity Tree for Employment Supportive Employment Program for $7,100, and they assisted 28 members in their program. Seats of Hope, the Senior Connections Program, was $15,896, and they assisted 56 members of our community. Community Action Human Resource Agency, their Casa Grande homeless program, they expended $14,405 and served 84 individuals in our community. The Boys and Girls Club, Lankola Club Membership Program or Scholarship Program, they were allocated $4,437, and they served 69 youth. That's, yeah, through the Lankola Program after school. The Against Abuse Housing and Support for Abuse Victims were allocated $17,138, and they served 47 fam, or excuse me, domestic violence victims. The Casa Grande Police Department, the homeless outreach team, was allocated $6,211 and served 28 individuals. The Community Development Division, that owner-occupied housing rehabilitation, we expended $136,438. We completed six projects in addition with funding provided from the Arizona Department of Housing Funds. The Planning and Development, our Code Enforcement Division, expended $87,451, and they served 13,000 or had 13,000 citations or cases that they served. The Opportunity Tree for Facility Improvement, we allocated $38,136. This was a carryover from the previous year, and that was to make improvements with their HVAC unit and additional windows into their facility. So they have 63 clients that they're serving. Our Planning and Administration, we have a 20% max that we can use, so we expended $86,935 for the administration of the CDBG program. We also have two projects that are carryforward that will be completed within probably the next six months. Public Works Sidewalk Improvements on the West End for $142,878. And then Public Works are doing an East Side sidewalk improvement on Roosevelt Avenue for $103,534. These numbers here indicate, the previous year, we had some carryforward funds for some programs where they went into July and part of August. So these numbers are a little bit higher than the previous numbers I just showed. So we served extremely low-income residents, 412 people were served, low income 76, and moderate income is 33%, so a total of 521. This data is collected on a monthly basis on a monthly performance report that we ask our subrecipients to complete. Some of it, if it's group activities, it's harder to collect, like homeless intervention, that type thing. But for us that have application, intake applications and stuff, this is where we're getting their data from. For race and ethnicity, I thought I would just highlight this. We had 352 families or individuals, I guess, that are white, African-American, 77, and then 24 multiracial, but 236 of those were Hispanic. Just wanted to highlight one of our projects that we did, a complete reconstruction this spring, I guess. You can see a scattered picture, the before, I guess it's the after, before, after, before, but you kind of get the grip of how bad the house was, what the shape was. And Lisa, you attended the ribbon cutting for that, and he's very happy and very content in his new house. The other thing I'd like to highlight is how important our enhanced code enforcement officers are. This was a picture they shared with me of an alleyway, city right-of-way, and the dumpster and the cleanup and the before and after. So, any questions?
I'm just shocked with that picture. That alley, wow.
I asked them actually for, I got inundated with lots of options. I could have chosen, but I thought that one, I hadn't seen this one before, so.
Yeah, no, that's crazy. Okay. Good, thank you, Mary. Any questions?
No.
No? I guess not?
Okay.
We're going to be easy on you tonight. So if we can go ahead and get a resolution number, please.
Madam Mayor, it is scheduled for a public hearing tonight.
Oh, it is? Okay, so this is a public hearing. If there's anyone that would like to come up and speak on this? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And so now we'll get a resolution number.
Resolution number 5822. A resolution of the Mayor of the Council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, approving the Program Year 2024 Community Development Block Grant Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I move that we approve resolution number 5822 as presented.
Second?
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, if we can get a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Romo?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Beedellin?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Hiddleston?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, Dan, you're up with, is it six, six items?
Yes, at least six items. So thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, and thank you for the opportunity to present tonight. I'm gonna walk you through the proposed code amendments. The code amendments are structured around three ordinances. The first is replacing chapter 17.68 to update the administrative procedures and other related code sections to ensure consistency. The second one is creating a new chapter, 17.66, to formalize the citizen review process. And the third is making revisions to the residential business and industrial use tables. After each of these, I will break for any questions the council may have. The changes to chapter 17.68 improves the clarity and organization by consolidating all administrative procedures into 10 articles encompassing site plans, conditional use permits, PEDs, zoning amendments, and other related matters. Importantly, we've incorporated the requirements of recently passed legislation. This means that site plans will now be reviewed and approved administratively by staff, not by the planning commission. This change aligns with state law and streamlines the review process. We've also consolidated development standards for certain conditional uses. These include the uses listed on your screen. This consolidation ensures consistency and enhances clarity for applicants and staff. Under the new structure, there is no longer a distinction between major and minor site plans. All site plan reviews will be conducted administratively. We've included a clear process for site plan amendments distinguishing between major and minor amendments to a site plan to ensure the appropriate level of review. In support of the code changes for administrative procedures, we're also amending several other chapters that are listed on your screen. There's nothing of real substance here, simply aligning the language with chapter 17.68. And that's to our first break for questions. Any questions about 17.68, the administrative procedures?
Any questions? So go ahead and hear.
Are you, so planning zoning, I'm not gonna show any, like even as a report or anything at the Planning Zoning Commission or in public? I know we're not required, but.
I'm happy to report to the Planning Zoning Commission the site plans and development that's going on in the community.
Stuff that's going through.
Sure.
I spoke personally with two of our legislatures this week, legislators this week, and a couple of occasions actually in person, and registered my disdain for this House Bill 2447 taking away local control of zoning from the city. And it has already been passed, but I registered before, I registered again today to quit taking away our local control at the state level because they sure don't like it when the federal government steps into the state level and takes their control away. And it's the same for us because I think nobody knows better about our zoning and our planning than the people of Casa Grande. So that's my two cents. Get off my soapbox.
Thank, thank you for doing that. Didn't go too far though, right?
No. It's already passed.
Next year. No, I know. And it is, it's so frustrating, so frustrating to see. So, but thank you. Any other questions, comments on this one? Okay.
So turning now to chapter 17.66, we hope to compensate for the state's new legislation that they recently passed for the citizen review process. This is a new chapter that aims to enhance transparency and foster early meaningful public input. It ensures the community is informed and engaged before applications advance too far in the review process. The purpose of chapter 17.66 is to enhance transparency, encourage early public input, mitigate potential negative impacts to the extent possible, and support community character. Pre-application notices will be mailed to property owners, owners within 300 feet of the site and may be expanded at the director's discretion. This facilitates early dialogue between the applicants and neighbors of a new development. Some examples of design changes that might result from early public engagement include lower building heights, increased setbacks, changes to lighting or access points, or enhanced landscaping. So we have a few different types of notification, notification processes. For public hearings, the proposed code will mandate a pre-application notification for resortings, CUPs, and general plan amendments to facilitate early dialogue with the developer and the surrounding property owners prior to formal submittal of an application. After a formal submittal of an, of a public hearing application, another public notification will be mailed informing the public of the, of the public hearing date. The site will be posted and the notice will be published in the newspaper. These requirements are currently in the code and required by state law. The projects that are not public hearing item will be reviewed by staff administratively, for example, site plans. Administrative review notices will be mailed to surrounding property owners within 300 feet, which is consistent with the public hearing process notification radius, or more at the director's discretion. For site plans and plaits, to inform the surrounding property owners that the city has received an application for development that will be reviewed administratively. The code currently requires a minimum of 200-foot notification for major site plans. And this is our second break. Are there any questions concerning chapter 17.66, the citizen review process?
You know, Dan, I think my only question is, you know, we have 300 feet and it says the director can expand it. Why wouldn't we go a little higher just off the bat? I mean, I, just because there's sometimes there's, you know, property that it's just 300 feet, there's nothing around them. So I'm sure that's your discretion to, to determine. But why stick to the 300 feet?
Staff's goal is to include, to the extent possible, as many neighbors that we believe are going to be impacted by a development. Some developments, for example, if it's a large parcel and there's a development and we hit 300 feet and we're just hitting the surrounding property owners, more than likely, we're going to expand that. And it's not unusual for us to expand that either.
Okay.
So we can expand it up to, depending on the use, we can expand it up to a mile if we needed to, in order to include that public participation and input.
Okay, so it'll be, you know, you'll make sure you take a look at that each time?
And we currently do that now.
Okay.
We, we expand beyond 300 feet all the time.
Right, okay.
Or the 200 feet that's currently required for site plans.
Okay. Okay, that's it. Any other questions, comments? Oh, sure.
And, and anyone can still talk on it, obviously, even if they're not notified. I mean.
Right, yeah, that's true.
I mean, just to be clear, how does this affect the general plan amendment process?
General Plan Amendment is a public hearing process.
So it's still gonna be the same?
Yeah, there'll be a pre-application meeting required unless, even if it's initiated by the city, we will notify the surrounding property owners pre-application. And then once there is an application that's formally submitted, if they decide to go forward, sometimes they'll receive a lot of negative public input for a public hearing item and decide not to move forward.
But it's still required to have a public hearing?
If it's, yeah. Well, I want to clarify that your question, what's.
For general plan amendments.
General Plan Amendment.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, that was my question about general plan amendment.
Okay.
Okay. So other questions?
Okay, so now we're moving on to the third part of the code amendment includes revisions to the residential use table, business and industrial use table, and conditional uses in commercial and industrial zoning. The goals are to reclassify conditional uses to permitted uses where appropriate, expand allowable uses, remove outdated land uses, and add new uses such as data centers, which is a new use out there that a lot of communities are, that are reviewing. And that one's pretty short and sweet. So any questions about the changes to our permitted uses, conditional uses?
So is this the one, yeah, Larry and I, no. The only, I know I had some questions on this earlier when it, when we talk about if there's zoning for, you know, specifically data centers. And so I'm concerned that, you know, if we keep it open, that we'll just have more and more data centers coming in. So we talked about the possibility of conditional use being applied. Is that, is that what we, I think we were talking a little bit about that, Larry.
Madam Mayor, you're, you're correct. What I think would be best is to let Mr. Coxworth kind of give the entire council a bit of an overview of data center, if a data center project came in, the zoning districts that they would be eligible to, to cite in today. And the issue about it being a permitted use versus a conditional use, I think is the direction that we're gonna be looking for tonight with the council. But I'll let, I'll let Dan go through that overview.
Okay.
Sure. Currently, the, the development code is silent on data uses. And so previously, the previous director and more recently, I have made an interpretation that because it is silent, that a data center, because it's essentially just a building with computers in it, that it's closely related to either manufacturing or warehousing. So currently, if we were to receive a data center, we've made that interpretation. Going forward, if we allow, allow them as a permitted use, and they would be allowed currently as proposed, a permitted use in I-1 and I-2, our industrial zonings, and a conditional use permit in our B-4, business zoning. That could be changed if council believes that these should go under some kind of public hearing item as a conditional use permit to be heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Currently, I don't believe we have any data centers in the City of Casa Grande. Other communities that have implemented restrictions on data centers have been somewhat inundated with data centers. So it's, I can answer any questions that you, you may have. My recommendation is that they be a permitted use in I-1 and I-2, but the council's free to discuss and change that if they wish.
Any questions? I, I'm just concerned that if it's permitted, that we're gonna, we're just gonna get them, you know. I mean, I get it's in the menu, you know, in our industrial area, but I like the idea of them having the conditional use and going to that extra step to get approved so we don't just open it up. But that, that's me. I don't know about that.
I agree with you.
It was a big topic at the.
Yeah, it was.
At the league conference.
It was.
About a lot of cities doing this, making a conditional, even though industrial, I mean ostensibly isn't close to many houses or anything.
Right.
However, the, I know that the water usage has gotten better, but the intense.
Energy use.
Energy use. And there's some solutions coming, I know. But that would be something that we could look at more as they applied for these things. And I know there's just been some big famous fights just down the road from us in Morana about it. And I might, Dan, I don't know if you want to, or what's out there in your, in your world of planners about these data centers?
We are starting to see some interest in the community for data centers. You know, in support of your concerns, once you do make this, if you were to make this a permitted use, it's very difficult to pull it back. So a first step might be to have them as conditional use permits and see what kind of interest is generated. And where they're citing these, there are some limitations with the utilities, if they, if the utilities can serve these as to where they, they will be located. So it's, while I'm recommending that they remain a permitted use, I fully understand your concerns in making these public hearing items and getting them before the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Right. Sure.
Because all of the, you know, learning what, the little bit I learned, I mean, of a big subject, it's, it's coming up a lot more around the state. It's necessary, I mean, with everything we talked about tonight with cameras and AI, I mean, they're, we're gonna need them. But however, they should be in the right place and be, you know, the right type of neighbor. And if they can do that through public hearing, I mean, then why not have them? But all of a sudden, are you inviting, once, once one comes permitted, then, you know, are you just opening the door for, for all of them to come in? And there's not a lot of job, I mean, it takes up a lot of real estate, but doesn't provide a lot of jobs for our community with those types of facilities. It has some construction jobs at the front end, but for the rest of the time, doesn't, you know, it doesn't have a lot of employment.
Looking at more control.
Mm-hmm.
Madam Mayor, can I make a couple of comments just to give some context? And as per usual, I'll want Dan to ensure that he's in agreement with this, with these statements. First and foremost, there has been a lot of dialogue related to neighboring cities. Some of that is because they had zoning districts that were much broader than Casa Grande's current I-1, I-2, and B-4. What you have proposed tonight is, is an ordinance that ultimately would make, as Dan has pointed out, has made, would make data centers permitted in I-1 and I-2 with a conditional use in B-4. What we have drafted in anticipation of some discussions about conditional use is that Mr. Wallace does have documentation that we could read into the record that ultimately would allow the council to put a conditional use on all of those zoning districts, right? Brett? Yes?
Yes, B-4, I-1, and I-2.
We do have an alternative. And we, and once we get to that section of it, and maybe we'll talk about it now, there's, we're doing most of these as adoption by reference. So what would actually be amending is the public document itself, because we'll be doing a resolution which essentially establishes the public document, followed by the ordinance that actually adopts that. And we, and we do that because of the length of these, so we don't have to publish 75 pages of zoning regulations, right? So when we get to that third one, if council does have a desire to have this be conditionally permitted, we have filed three copies of that with Adriana, which is required by the statute. So you just have a motion to say that you'd like it to be conditional in all three. And if that's the will of the council, then we'll be able to substitute that document prior to implementing that last portion of this tonight.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
I, I, just in, in relationship to data centers, and I'll be, and I'll look to Dan to perhaps even answer a question in this, Madam Mayor. What we are finding, I, you've, there's been some discussion tonight about projects becoming more interested in our region for these types, for citing these types of projects. You've, I've heard the issue about water. We are hearing from at least those that are evaluating the Casa Grande market that water, that they're, they are bringing new technology that ultimately results in less water. We've not seen any demand usage at this point to really kind of opine on that. The second component of that, and this may lead to the question, is that the item about power source, the issue about power source has been identified. And certainly APS has a policy. We, we hope to have them present at a future council meeting specifically about their policies related to serving of data. But what we're hearing is these data centers are coming up with new solutions that ultimately to be the power, that will provide the power in lieu of them connecting to, to our, one of our local power providers today. And so I guess with that being said, Dan, if a project of that nature transpired, and, and let's just say that they had an alternative use for power, would that be something that would be, that may need to go to a conditional use regardless of the decision of the mayor and council on a data center project itself?
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's a good question. I mean, if they are, because really the concerns are water, and as the city manager has said, that they're, they're finding ways to recycle and use a lot less water. If they, if they do that, typically, they don't need as much energy because, because it's not air cooled, it's air cooling them, that requires the power source. And there are some data centers that are proposing, at least in discussions with us, bringing their own power. I think if they, if they do that, or if there's a power provider that can serve a data center, they will be clustered, I believe, so to speak. I mean, there is infrastructure required for these. They also have to have, you know, fiber optic cable to, to, it's, it's important for that as well. So there's a lot of factors in citing these, but if, you know, if, if you don't think there's much harm with, with a data center because of, and I think the concerns are with the legacy systems, with the new systems that are coming online, you know, at least allowing them in I-2 as, as a permitted use and, and just, you know, see where, where they go, where they end up going. So and, and right now, the interest is kind of on the outskirts of our industrial, industrial area where there is some infrastructure to support these data centers. So there's, there is opportunity there from an economic development perspective, but I'm not here to discuss that. I'm here just, that's the land use perspective.
Okay.
So what you just said is maybe permitted I-1, conditional I-2, and B-4?
Conditional I-1, permitted I-2.
Yeah, okay, I always get those backwards.
And I think that might change some things from a legal perspective.
Right, because we, we, from, to Dan's point, we, we had drafted all conditional or permitted in I-1 and I-2. So certainly if that, if, if I-2 permitted becomes an option, then we can do a couple of things. We can table this item tonight and come back with a new document. And, and I will ask Mr. Wallace if the other option is to vote tonight, whether or not we can make a change to that.
Yeah, and I think, I, I think that.
Yeah, and I think, I think that, to answer city manager's reins, we did, we did prepare one with all conditional for the one that was originally presented by, and to the Planning and Zoning Commission. But you can make whatever motion you want, and we'll just try to make very clear at that point, like, you know, which one we're doing. Make sure that Adriana has all the documents that, that we need to be done. She can make the one change, if that's what you want to do, to make it conditional in I-1 only. So it'll ultimately be, and this is after the public hearing, of course, you know, the pleasure of council to tell us what they want. If we can accomplish it tonight, because it's an easy change, then we'll do that. If we cannot accomplish it tonight, then I'll ask that you table it so that we can bring forth, you know, a more comprehensive document. But if that's the only change, it'll be a relatively easy one for us to make the record clear as to what we're adopting tonight.
And in keeping it, or changing it to the alternative of conditional use in both I-1 and I-2, it's very simple to come back to you and, and change it to a permitted use, just to kind of keep this moving forward.
Sure.
Yeah, I guess my only concern is, yes, some of them do have better technology, but it also comes with a price, and that doesn't mean that the ones that want to come here are going to be the guys that are looking at long-term. There's all those developers out there that have a great idea, and they find the cheap way to do it for themselves that costs the community more. So I like the idea of keeping conditional use so that we can see it, because that doesn't mean, it just doesn't mean that they're bringing in the right technology that would benefit.
Right. Okay. I, I agree.
I do, too.
Yeah. So.
I agree with all conditional.
Yep.
So we'll wait till the motion and then go from there? Okay. Okay.
It, it will be a public hearing. And like I said, we're going to end up with three resolutions, three ordinances. When we get to the, the final resolution, that's when we'll just make clear, you know, as to what the preference of council is and which document that we'll be asking Adriana to make the official public record document at that time.
Okay.
Okay, so the final one.
But I think I hear which direction.
Is that, this is the final resolution, or this is the, 3479? Okay, okay, so I think we're good with that one, then.
And I'm all done, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so, so now, public hearing. So I'll go ahead and open this up to a, a public hearing. So if there's any questions, if anyone would like to come up and address the council, now's the time to do that, do that on this. Anyone? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and move forward. So let's see, so Adriana, are we gonna start with the first resolution?
Resolution number 5823, a resolution of the mayor and council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona declaring as a public record a certain document pertaining to the citizen review process for land use applications.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I move to approve resolution number 5823 as presented.
Second. Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If we can get a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Romo?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Beddelen?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Hiddleston?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, now ordinance number 3477.
Yes, ordinance number 3477, an ordinance of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona amending the city of Casa Grande municipal code by adding Chapter 17.66, citizen review process to Title 17 zoning, establishing the separability of various sections of the ordinances and establishing an effective date.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I move approve ordinance number 3477 as presented.
Second. Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? If we can get a roll call vote.
Councilmember Romo?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Beddelen?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Hiddleston?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Now, resolution 5824.
Resolution number 5824, resolution of the mayor and, and the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona declaring as a public record a certain document pertaining to the administrative procedures of the city's zoning code.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I would move for approval of resolution number 5824 as presented. Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? If we can get a roll call vote.
Councilmember Romo?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Beddelen?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Hiddleston?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. And ordinance 3478.
Ordinance number 3478, an ordinance of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona amending the city of Casa Grande municipal code by amending Chapter 17.68 administrative procedures, Chapter 17.08 administration, Chapter 17.14 fees, Chapter 17.24 business zones, Chapter 17.40 plant area development zone, Chapter 17.60 home occupations, and Table 17.24.170 self-storage of Title 17 zoning regarding updated administrative procedures for certain land use applications, establishing the separability of the various sections of the ordinance and establishing an effective date.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I move that we approve ordinance number 3478 as presented. Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, if we can get a roll call vote.
Councilmember Romo?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Beddelen?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Hiddleston?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Resolution number 5825. Is this the one we're treating? Okay.
Resolution number 5825, a resolution of the mayor and the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona declaring as a public record a certain document pertaining to the amendments to the conditional uses for the various zoning districts and the use tables for the various zoning districts contained within the city of Casa Grande municipal code.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I move approve of resolution 5825 with the amendment.
This is the one.
Right.
Yeah.
With the amendment to require a CUP in I-1, I-2, and B-4 for data center usage.
So essentially, what will be happening with Mr., with Councilmember Herman's motion is that we'll be, we have a substituted document that has been filed with Adriana. What it does, it changes Section 17.32030 and 1736030 to add data centers as a conditionally permitted use and changes the tables therein. So the one that is on the public agenda will not be the one that we'll do. We will have it substituted so that the public will be able to see that after tonight. But if that motion is seconded, that will be what we're voting tonight, which is for data centers to be conditionally permitted uses in I-1 and I-2 in addition to B-4 where it was already going to be a conditionally permitted use.
Okay.
Second, second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, if we can get a roll call vote.
Councilmember Romo?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Beddelen?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Hiddleston?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And the final one, ordinance number 3479.
Ordinance number 3479, an ordinance of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona amending the city of Casa Grande municipal code by amending Section 17.24.030, 17.24.120, 17.24.210, 17.28.030, 17.32.030, and 17.36.030, and Tables 17.16.030A and 17.16.030B, all within Title 17 zoning pertaining to the conditional uses and zoning district use tables establishing the separability of the various sections of the ordinance and establishing an effective date.
Take a breath now. Okay, if we get a motion.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I move for approval of ordinance number 3479 as presented. Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? If we can get a roll call vote.
Councilmember Romo?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Beddelen?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Hiddleston?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay. Well, thank you, everyone, for being so patient. So the final item are reports from the council members. So why don't we start with you, Matt?
I always have a lot to say, thanks. Not too much tonight, but I get to go first, I can say BizOutlook luncheon on Friday. Lisa did a great job of getting a lot of information out effectively. I learned a lot even from your presentation, it was very good. And city staff, I know, helped a lot with that in the PIO department, so it went very smoothly and very good job, Mayor.
Thank you.
On that. I also want to thank Dan Coxworth. I had to, I need some information for some people I was talking to, and he was very helpful. I appreciate it. And well, Stephen this week, too. Everybody went above and beyond, and Larry, as always, but, you know. So, but yeah, you, Dan and Stephen, I really appreciate the help you guys had this week. And then, you may have heard earlier, but announcing October 25th is the Fall Day of Shredding for the Youth Commission, First American Credit Union at 1,001 North Pennale Avenue from 9:00 to 12:00. So it will be an exciting day of shredding papers, so, thank you.
Thank you. How about you, Anthony?
No reports.
Okay, Sean?
Yeah, my screen isn't working. That's my report of the evening. I don't know what's going on up here.
We'll talk about it after hours.
But no, I also attended the Biz, Chamber of BizOutlook luncheon. You did a great job, Lisa, along with staff supporting her and everything. So excellent job. Like Matt said, I learned a lot. And your talk, I got a fortune to listen to Matt talk, and he was, I actually learned some stuff from him, too, so.
Okay, how about you, Bob?
No report.
Okay. Brett?
No reports.
Just great job. I agree with what they were saying, so that's it.
No, thanks. No, the BizOutlook lunch was great, so of course, that's everyone, everything we're all doing. So, and thank you for all the staff and the PIO group that, that helped us put all that together. So it's good to be there with all our businesses in the community. But this, you know, we're definitely gearing up. It's nice weather, so I'm sure you all have your calendars full. You know, the, this Saturday is the 9/11 Day of Service at Karmic Nap Park. It starts at 7:30 a.m. So I just want to thank all of our volunteers. We have a lot of youth in the community that are going to be doing graffiti cleanup and painting and trash pickup, so that's going to be a great event.